Did he zoom in?
Oh, he's on them.
Yeah, I'm on.
Awesome. Thanks, Brian. Good, 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 good.
Thank you, Tim.
We're gonna set timers for public comments. After they put their name in their eye rolls, then. Right now, once we change that.
Nice for the retreat down there.
All right. We're ready. And I forgot my scabbard again on the floor. Oh, my God. All right. You ready? All right. Let's call this regular meeting of the Red Oak City Council to order Monday, December 2nd, two thousand twenty-four, here at five thirty at the nineteen oh four North Broadway Red Oak Fire Station. Invocation by Kevin Berry with River of Life Church. Please stay.
Heavenly Father, first of all, we praise you for who you are, for what you have done, that you have you have made us, you have made this place. And we thank you that we have the opportunity to be here. We thank you for these people, both on the council and in attendance. That we are here because we love this community. Please help us to to hear from you, to hear from each other, and that everything that is said and done tonight, we glorify you and would and would improve this community. But we love you and we invite you here. Please temper our our comments and give us wisdom as we speak and as we decide. But we love you and we thank you. Amen.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Adam, would you like to lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call. Ashley.
Bradley.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Fredo.
Here.
Isaac.
Yes.
Heatbreak.
Here.
Number five, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve.
Fredo and Bradley. Roll call.
Bill.
Yes.
Fredo.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Heatbreak.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yeah.
Number six is proclamations and special notices. I don't believe we have anything. Number seven is public comments. We have a two-minute limit, and you must sign in at the front door to speak. Did we get any online, by the way, too, or in the office? And there's nothing online. Okay, all right. So we'll start at the top.
Levi.
Levi. That's okay. I figured it out after you said it. Levi Franks Jr., if you'd like to come to the podium, state your name and address. And then your agenda item is the garbage issue.
Yeah. Well, I've heard that the city wants a real wants a control or garbage pickup, and I don't want it that way. I wanted to pick up with who I want to myself, not the city. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Blue.
Karen Blue, six oh six Sunset. Also wanted to speak to garbage. We seem to have a lot of it, and it's all over, and it really needs to be addressed. And I think the council's the one that has to address it. What my suggestion would be, when I moved here over fifty years ago, we had mandatory garbage. And we had bill through the water department. So everyone had it. Or you paid for it whether you had it or not. Now, there's a psychological thing there, I think, that some of the people, if they are paying for it, will use it. That would be my hope if we went to mandatory. Because I think it I think our town looks absolutely trashy. I live in a lot of small towns. Most of them do not look quite as trashy. And I did do some checking, and most of the towns I talked to had mandatory garbage. And so I would suggest that the council consider this. And I do know, and I would make a point, that everyone should know that it's the five council people, when it's not here, five council people that make this decision. It is not going to be made by the mayor. And it's not going to be made on Facebook. Instead, it's the five people that are going to be sitting there. And so I would suggest that people that have their comments and their questions, if they didn't bring them tonight or at your next meeting, that they contact and explain the reasons why. I am I'm a believer in recycling. But I do not feel that maybe Red Oak is ready for recycling. I think we have to take perhaps baby steps to get us there, as much as I hate to admit that maybe they aren't going to be able to figure it out. But in these years that we've had to recycle dumpsters downtown that we can recycle in, invariably you see things that are not on the label to go in that particular bin. Which means that I don't know if we had special garbage things to take out and people sorted, but they couldn't even sort right.
All right, Karen, the time is up. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Hey, Kevin Carlisle.
I wrote it down because I can't remember it now. Uh, nice to meet you all. Kevin Carlisle, and this is my wife, Amy. We're with Town and Country Sanitation. As you know, I've reached out to each one of the council members in regards to this topic, and would like to thank the ones who've reached back. We're here tonight to ask for your transparency, open minds, as you proceed through looking into this matter into mandatory curbside trash recycling and the residential accounts within the city limits of Red Oak. As we understand the concerns you have with the hazards and the unsightliness of the trash that is being piled up on certain properties, as well as the concerns with the infrastructure. We also know there are many options that can be explored, being said, excuse me, before simply diving into a contract that provides this service and having it be on the water bill. I kind of said that wrong, sorry. But with my wife, the current council member, and myself, a formal council member, and the code enforcement officer for the city of Griswold, we feel there are other avenues that to be used to alleviate the current situation you're in. Please keep in mind the devastating financial outcome this could have to local haulers. Be local. Be local. Thank you. And one final comment. Also, taking into consideration the people that put you in the seats that you sat in, just ask that you be open minded.
Kevin, can you give your address for the record?
Two ten eighth Street, Griswold, Iowa. That's where I'm at right now.
Got it. Thank you. All right, Lynette Bruce.
I'll also write mine down. I hope you understand how upsetting this mandatory trash service is just about and sanitation. We love our community, and we'd love to continue and want to continue to serve and invest in our community. If this goes out for bids, we cannot compete against the big corporation that owns the landfill and already has the equipment for curbside service. I'm asking you to give the citizens a chance to truly understand what you're asking for and let them tell you how they feel. There is more to this than just putting this on your water bill, much, much more. Thank you.
Thank you.
In AR, since this is maybe a hot topic, I can at least update the council that I'm invited Kevin and Lynette to meet with me on Wednesday to kind of talk about some of their ideas. And assure them that, you know, tried to explain that our priorities are certainly making sure that garbage is taken care of in our community, that there are people that are not taking care of that. I've asked them to provide me for both of their companies, how many people they're each servicing, so that we can understand the gap. We obviously have two other haulers that I need to get in contact with, but my understanding is they're both very small accounts, but we'll find out what that is, because based on at least their preliminary numbers, there could be hundreds of houses. You know, and it's hard to determine how many of those are then, you know, these people claim they're taking garbage to to the landfill directly, which they do have that right to do that. And so I've just assured them or people that have reached out to me that we're going to do what we can, that we do prioritize local, and that part of the the council's task will be to balance the services that we see that are lacking to try and support them as local businesses. I talked about that maybe there's a way that we can use both of them, but that the other side that I think Kevin kind of mentioned in his comments is that part of the other balance of what we're looking at is infrastructure and how having four garbage trucks that drive up and down every street, because each one gets a couple on every street, especially when they go in the alleys, and alleys are not built for the weight of residential or residential alleys are not built for garbage trucks. And so how we balance, you know, giving people free choice, you know, do we get a better price, working with them on having toters and and how they can get attachments to their existing trucks, things like that, so that you know, like I had the street department today come in with concerns about, they were just trying to get the alleys ready for winter, just kind of filling in some of the divots and potholes with gravel or cold patch. And there's just heaps of garbage, like sitting on trailers, sitting in yards, literally had to get out of the truck to get garbage bags out of the way just to be able to complete their work. And so I asked them to send me those. You know, there's the nuisance side of it. I think also to help people understand, like, people that have hoarder tendencies, this isn't going to fix all of that. But it's the simple, regular day garbage that when you have that hauler out there. So I would say, you know, I'll see how the meeting goes. We'll talk about, you know, at least I think I have to hear those things at my level first to just kind of be able to bring something back to you. But that I tried to assure both of them that it is not our goal to put anybody out of business, but that we have to balance being supportive of our local businesses. Obviously, they're not equal. Lynette is a taxpayer and Kevin is not. So even that is like how far out do we call local? You know, that we know they service here, but all of those things go into, we want to support you, but we also want to be able to provide the service that the five of you believe is what's best for the community and balancing garbage and nuisance and streets and infrastructure and things like that. So I've tried to assure them that that we're going to work with them as much as we can. Obviously, there's a lot of conversation. I went to the radio station to try and help answer the questions that Aaron was hearing. And so just wanted to let people know that, so that if people are tuning in or choose to watch this, that it's not just our goal to pick a big hauler, to try and balance things.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. Number eight, consent agenda. This includes the minutes of the city council meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the special and regular sessions, and then the library board for November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Okay, Isaac.
So good.
And Heatbreak. Roll call. Fredo.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Heatbreak.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Number nine, December second, city claims, and this does include what Lisa sent out with regard to the short week of Thanksgiving. I believe that amount was a hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Go ahead, Lisa.
I was gonna say, page sixteen has the one total. And then oh, and there was a check that was cut that same day that didn't somehow it pulled the check out, so you have to add the eighty-three thousand on page sixteen plus the one thousand forty-five on page seventeen, and then the one sixty that the mayor just referenced is the three that you're putting considering. Is that in your motion, Brian, all three?
Yep, I I reviewed those earlier.
Okay. I'll second. All right. So Bills and Bradley. Any discussion? Roll call.
Isaac.
Yes.
Heatbreak.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Fredo.
Yes.
All right. Number ten is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five regarding a pub public comment policy. Lisa explained in her memo, and she did a great job providing all of this supplemental documents that would be included in this. Basically, in a nutshell, we're looking at increasing the public comment period to three minutes, identifying that the total amount of time that we will allow for public comments is twenty minutes. And so if we do have a large number of people here, we can designate however many minutes to get those people in. But for the most part, it's three minutes. And then Lisa's suggesting that we also do a public comment at the end. So the first public comment would be based on anything government-related, anything that's on the agenda, just anything local government-related. The second public comment at the end of the meeting is specifically about anything that was on the agenda that the council may have taken action on or discussed.
So I'm just going to throw out there, I'm I'm all for changing the time requirements on the the beginning comments. I am against having comments at the end. If there's something that we need to address or comment on, I feel like that can wait till our next meeting and our next agenda. I don't feel like we need to rehash what we talked about in our meeting at the end of the meeting. That's my that's my whole comment on that.
Thank you.
I agree with Brian on that. Some of our council meetings take, like their last one was quite a lengthy one. And then to have somebody come back up and speak over something that we just hashed over, that could make it just even longer. And I know we're up here for a reason, but to hash over the problem, I think we need to hear it again and again.
Yeah, and once again, we can we can put that on the agenda at the next meeting for something we feel like we need to talk about.
You mean if someone were wanting to come back up? Is that what you mean, Brian?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to address something that we discussed in our meeting, they just have to attend the next meeting and get on the agenda and just sign in, and they can talk about whatever they want.
Or reach out to the council members before.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely, yes.
I want to clarify, too. One thing that sort of shifts is that this makes it clear that while you can submit these agenda request items, all that does is sort of pre-place you under public comment. It does not mean that the public could have five things that they will force you to discuss. It is your agenda. And if and so it's basically saying, like, if you ask to be on the agenda ahead of time, so say, Lynette and Kevin said they want to come here. So then, under public comment, it would have their names, and it would say they're talking about garbage. So they still fall under the public comment, because at the end of the day, the agenda is the mayor's agenda or council's requesting the mayor to put something on there. And then it's not typical that the public gets to say, we want you to talk about this. If you don't want to talk about it, they can come here and ask you to put it on your agenda, and then you can decide. But it sort of prevents that that they force you to talk about something that the county, you know, otherwise there are communities where people do that, and it kind of becomes not the council's agenda anymore.
Yeah.
And again, it's a meeting open to the public that is for observation, and then cities decide how they want the public to interact. So I also, if you read in here, it talks about again, since garbage is the topic for today's public comments, if you were talking about it on your agenda, and then you wanted to reach out to the two of them as haulers as a part of you inviting them back to the comment that it's on the agenda, you can do that. But otherwise, they have a right to speak under public comment. And I think the only reason that I suggested the thing at the end is that it is still fresh. It's the time where you have talked about it, and it just gives someone the opportunity in that same meeting, you know. And even if you change that to like, if you decided if some of you wanted to keep it at the end, you could change that to two minutes, and I've never seen it be a problem. It's just somebody coming up and saying like, hey, you just decided this, and I didn't know this is what you were going to talk about, and it just gives them an opportunity to make a quick comment. That was the only reason that's okay. It's fresh in the mind of the council at that moment.
Do you have any thoughts on this, Sharon?
Oh, I feel like that sometimes that people are agitated, and it might cause friction within to bring that to the council. I feel like it should be on the next agenda. Okay, I think people need to stop to think about things that we've discussed, and if they want to bring that up, then we'd be glad to discuss it at the council meeting. That that's the way I feel.
Okay.
Well, if you if you move it to the end.
We're not moving it. We're adding another.
If you move it to the end, then those people, whatever they think or want to say doesn't amount to a bench because it's already done. They need to express their feelings prior to doing to to ask discussion.
So this policy is stating, I'm just clarifying, that we would have the three minute at the beginning, like we currently do, but add a minute to it. And then this would be a second public comment.
So to your point, yes, that if you see on the agenda, we're going to talk about whatever, the audit. And you have a comment about that, then they get to speak before, but they don't get to hear what you all had to say, and they don't know what you're going to decide. So then the end one is once you've now decided, if they still have something to say based on what they learned from your discussion and your decision, they can say it at the same meeting. But it sounds like at least three of you agree that you'd rather have them come back to another meeting.
You know, and and you know, when I when I when I hear the what you just said, Lisa, I I, you know, I I don't, I I'm not saying that there's no value in that. However, I mean, that being said, I just, I feel like like what everybody else feels like, if they if they have wanted, if they feel strongly enough about it, come back to the next meeting and present it to us. You know, I mean, if if we're going to do it that, if we're going to have comments at the end, we might as well just open every topic up for discussion.
Well, and the agenda is made public. They know what we're going to discuss. So if they have in their minds that they would like to talk about something that's on the agenda, they have the chance to do it at the beginning.
So do you think we should only have, like, at the beginning? Is that what you're saying, John? And Tim, thoughts?
Yeah, I think, Brian, what I guess maybe what I'm trying to interpret from what you had said was, it almost seems if the decision already been made, why bring it back up again if we've already made a vote and it's been decided, approved or disapproved, then talking about it at the end doesn't seem to be worthwhile or we can't go back and change.
You can't change it. It's already been done. I mean, if if somebody isn't happy about the decision that was made, it could be brought up at the next meeting or just contacted your council representative at another time, because again, the decision has already been made.
Though we don't need to, if we don't need any changes, we don't need to do anything.
So I would say you should still have it clear about my preference would be, because I feel like people think they can come and put whatever they want on the agenda on the agenda. I don't think that's the intent of in my in my administrative side of it, I don't think that the public should dictate what you put on the actual agenda. As opposed, because I think that's what people think.
Yeah, no, and I and I never I never meant that. What I meant was they can come in and sign in, and they can talk about whatever they want in the public comments section. If we want, and if we as a council decide that we want to put it on the agenda in the future, we can certainly do that.
But when you think about what it sounds like to the public is, I'm putting this on your agenda, and then I can sit and engage with the council. As opposed to I can request to be on public comment. And then to me, the reason to have you keep sort of that agenda request item is that if there's something that someone feels like they want to give you a letter, and it gets in the packet, then it's still under public comment. You're still receiving information. And you could say, hey, we like that. Put it on the next agenda, or thank you for your comment, and we move along because you don't want to talk about it. So I think it's a little bit deceiving when you call it an agenda request item, which you do have right now.
Yes.
And so that's where, to me, I would say, I would also think two minutes, like, the likelihood of twenty-two people showing up here and having it be an hour is not very often, right? Like, you might want some blueness with, let's just say, garbage.
We've not ever had more than three at a council meeting in the last two years that I'm.
Right. So to me, when you actually do, you know, like, I don't think Karen sounded long-winded, but she technically was over her two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes is pretty short.
Right.
I personally think the three minutes is a better. So to clarify, so we've got the resolution that's basically adopting the public comment policy.
So then we could.
Public comment policy, could we just eliminate the public comment at the end of the regular council meeting?
Well, that's what I'm hearing. The council does not want it. Nobody wants it.
And then any other place we reference that, like in the beginning, I don't, I think we've referenced it one place.
I think it's just there.
So can we then make a motion to adopt it with removing that end of the
That's what I would do.
Because I do like the three minutes, and I like the no more than the total amount of time for all speakers. So that way it does.
So some cities will say, like, if all of a sudden you saw twenty people signed up, and now their three minutes turns into an hour. Typically, then you'd say, like, okay, one of you signed up for garbage, or ten of you for and ten of you against. And then you'd say, you know, you could even kind of say, like, you can each get a minute, or the first five of you can stand up, and then if everybody's going to say, like, aye, you could literally say, like, okay, who agrees with those five? Or these other people wanted to speak for it or against it, so that.
Why can't we limit it to five? Five people for their last three minutes. That's fifteen minutes.
Well, you can, but you can also, I think the key is always, like, if it's a really important topic, and you want everyone to speak, like, it's just basically saying, like, our goal is that it's no longer than twenty minutes of our meeting. But if it's super important and you want to hear from everybody, like, you always have a right to make it more loose. But this at least puts guidelines out there, which is why I would still say it's good to have a policy. We can put it right out on the website along with the you know, and what we would change to request to make a public comment ahead of time. And then it says, like, if you want to turn something in, or put it in the packet, your name's on there. People know you're going to come and talk about the topic you want to talk about, so maybe other people agree, disagree, whatever. Just like we put my comments out there. So I would say then that paragraph that says a public comment at the end, it sounds like everyone wants that eliminated. And we would then, like, at the time section, we would say the one time for a public comment will be at the beginning. And then so if you wanted to, if somebody wanted to adopt it, you could say, you know, motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four seventy-five with the policy deleting any reference to having a second public comment. And then when I finish it and put it out there, it'll not reference anything.
Many people ask in advance to speak before they sign in. Have we had that?
We have.
On occasion. I don't think it's happened a lot.
A lot.
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
That was kind of why we created that form, which we can update that form, too, and change the title of it.
Make it clear. You can reference the policy and then.
How do how do we control personal attacks?
The mayor can call someone out of order.
Yep. And I can have people physically removed if they're disrespectful.
It's pretty rare, but some, you know, sometimes communities do this when, like, in some communities I've worked in, people were super out of control with, like, coming up to the podium constantly. And then we created this policy, and then that person felt very attacked because it was like, you're just trying to restrict me, and I was allowed to do this for so long. And so my lesson's kind of been like, while it isn't this way, this is the. My lesson's kind of been like, while it isn't this way, this is the policy. We're not beating on someone. We just want to understand that this is a meeting open to the public to watch. The city council is not required to give public comment under Iowa law, but no one would say don't, you know? But so it's just better to have like a guideline for how we're going to handle that. Um, and just be clear. And so I think it's better to be dealing with this when you don't have an issue. Because some communities really get people that it's challenging in a meeting.
And we'll note, we, we made one edit on that resolution. So you've got the final version in front of you.
There was just a, in the last whereas paragraph.
Yeah, yeah. In the last whereas paragraph, that was updated to Red Oak. And so I think that that resolution can be adopted if you so choose with that edit on the exhibit A. If anybody wants to make a motion.
I move to approve the resolution, um, removing any references to the second public comment section at the end of the meeting.
All right, so right off, did you get that, Ashley? And Bradley, any further discussion on this?
And we're, we're going to change the talk time to three minutes, correct?
Yes.
That's three minutes.
It will be three minutes. All right, roll call. Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Right sit.
Yes.
All right, number eleven, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-seven for city annual audit request for proposal. And Lisa explained in the memo, um, that she has spoken to the state auditor. And, um, I guess you guys probably read your memo. And then all the supporting documents to that as well. The resolution, the exhibit A. The request for proposal example. The evaluation criteria for how to select, um, our city profile information. I have a quick question with you for you on that. With our city population. What is, we've had it changed. So it was fifty-five ninety-six. And now it's run by fifty-four. Is it, what is it?
I thought, are you, I don't know where you got it, what year it was, but we can look.
We might need to look at that. Just double check. So this would be for three years. This would be a three-year agreement. And then there's a draft agreement, which looks really good as well. And then the evaluation criteria and the scoring. So.
So I was not accustomed to a community of this size using the state for our auditors. And so I did reach out to them just to say like, maybe my perception was off because most communities will use a private firm to do that. And so I said, um, you know, it's usually like the, like all the other communities in the county where we're a lot bigger. And so he said, yes, you are exceptionally big for our groups that we do. And he called it one of our most complicated cities, which means, you know, you just have a lot more stuff the bigger that you are. Um, you know, like a little city maybe doesn't have an airport, doesn't have all the other separate funds that we have and things like that. They don't have, they don't necessarily have a separate library, things like that.
In your past experience, have you used an outside auditor?
So I did interim work in a community of four hundred that used the state auditor and in no other case have I ever had the state there auditors.
So you would request that we get an outside party to do the auditing?
What I'm saying is put the bids out.
Put the bids out.
What was important to me, which is why I also called the auditors, is I didn't want them to think we thought they were doing a bad job. And I wanted to know if they were allowed as the government to put in a proposal. So that if for some reason no one else is interested in the private side, that they can still do it. And so he said, yes, they were allowed to. So I thought that was important. Doesn't mean we have to change, but I think it's important to see what else is out there. My biggest concern is not the work that they do, is the timeliness of it. We still don't have our fiscal twenty-three audit and I think it's because again, we're big, we're complicated and they have a lot of work and they're short-staffed. Whereas a private firm, you know, if the governor had this like, let's get rid of employees and cut departments. Like a private firm can make more money, then they're going to hire more people. They're not just gonna, like there's.
Are there certified public auditors?
Yeah, so like I just as a check, because this is super late, I didn't know if anybody would even bid on it. So I checked with the last firm that I used, that, um, their office is in Minnesota. And then they came down to the Dubuque area and they have an office in Omaha and he checked with them and said that they would, they would be interested and would be able to do it in February. Whereas these guys, if they come, we're not doing it until April.
Better to have somebody in Iowa that knows Iowa law?
Well, they do both sides. It's just their office, you know? So I, he was more saying like, we might not be coming over from the office that you were used to, but it's our firm. And, um, and maybe nobody bids and we still use the state and we then kind of refocus and say, okay, let's do it for fiscal twenty-five. But knowing that, like I'm filling out reports and I, we've, we're six months out from fiscal twenty-four. Being done and we still don't have twenty-three. Like that's the biggest thing. It's not super, if there was anything going on.
Yeah.
Do they do it remotely or on, for onsite?
Everyone that I've ever done, they're outside.
I'm saying that some of our records are, you know.
Well, that's the thing. If we do an outside source, they can also, they also have software that you can pour things into. And gets things to where the right accounts where they need to go to.
The, the way that this is written is they're, they need to show their experience. Like, we're not just going to have someone from Colorado be like, I am.
My concern.
Right, no. That's part of what will be.
I thought the criteria were really good and I thought they.
I think you're, um, on timeliness is a big thing because we don't want to.
The benefits would be to get Scott, right?
Yes.
To.
More timely.
Timely, organized, maybe.
Yeah, well, like the fact that did hurt, like that has helped us with these reports that we're talking about tonight, like she had her audit three months. From fiscal twenty-four. So she's like, what do you mean you don't have?
And we won't have ours till April if we go.
Not April. They're coming.
They're coming in April, which would mean we won't have it.
So you're literally like finishing two years before you get like.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's.
And I think what it says is again, this is not their customary. They are what they call an auditor of last resort. So you're supposed to use them when you're little and nobody else has time for you. Like we're big enough. And I honestly don't think that the price. Uh, you know, I think also there's a perception that the state would give you a better price than a private. And when I, it's obviously public information. So, uh, when I called that reference to say like, hey, is anyone in your firm? Would you guys be able to still do fiscal twenty-four? And when he looked at the price, he said, that's about where we think we would land. So it isn't like we're going to pay exorbitantly. Long money to bring in somebody else to be more timely.
So your suggestion is to go for a request for also for, um, independent auditors, correct?
Right, which could still be the state. It's not, it's not for, yeah, so I think it's appropriate for, um, and I think I have a resolution. You're saying that the council would be directing me to go out and do the RFP.
Yes, and this is for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. That's what the RFP would be for is for three years. And the exhibit A, just pointing out, um. She's, Lisa's identified how we would have those submitted, where they would be submitted and that we would potentially be able to award. By January twentieth or February third. So it's just all explained and this is exhibit A. So.
Hard to make, hard to make accurate decisions without accurate information.
Well, and I think having somebody new look at our stuff would be advantageous as well.
Do you want to ask?
I would think a motion that we allow Lisa Carter, our city administrator, to, um, pursue an independent auditor. For the years of twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six and to take the bids appropriately.
The bids will come back to the council.
Using the documents that are in here.
But how many bids we got? Where were we looking at? Just.
I'll send them to, I'll basically ask around like who does public audits and I'll send them directly so that we're not just hoping they see it. I'll do that yet this week.
I'll second.
All right. Bradley and Heatbrink, any other further discussion? Roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Brian, are you out there?
Yes.
We didn't hear you vote. Did you say yes for the vote?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear the roll call. Yes, I, I vote yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Hey, Dick?
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
All right, number twelve, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-six. This is for the wages of Todd Silt. He has completed his six-month, um, probationary period. Whereas it has been our standard to provide a three percent increase. As long as they're performing at the expected level. He did undergo his, um, monthly, his six-month review. And his current, he was hired at twenty-three dollars. And his pay would increase to twenty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. So the draft resolution spells that out. He's doing a very good job with our water department.
I move to approve.
All right, right off?
I'll second it.
Heatbrink? Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Hey, Dick?
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number thirteen, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-eight, approval of the urban renewal annual report. Uh, Lisa explained in the memo basically what this is. And she also submitted the TIF documents to us via email. And I've asked her to kind of explain some of these things to us, whereas several of you are somewhat new.
So basically what the state requires in the state portal is there's a system in place. That asks you to summarize any development agreements that you have, any money that you're spending on, economic development incentives. You have legal fees that get charged to the TIF. Non-rebate incentives like, um, like our D U R little loans that we give for the downtown businesses. Where we reimburse up to twenty-five percent at a max of seventy-five hundred dollars. What this forum does is just really summarizes the revenue that's coming into the TIF and that the rebates or non-rebates that we gave out. And so, for example, in the downtown, um, and it's not a perfect science also because we have. Uh, we're obviously asking for a certain amount of money and then because, you know, like if we have the co-op, for example, getting an incentive. They're going to get pretty much what we asked for because we know about what their rebate's going to be when it's tax-based. Uh, based on taxes. However, with the D U R, they're seventy-five hundred dollars that they are willing to give up to. And that you only get the seventy-five hundred if you spend thirty, because you can get the max of the twenty-five percent. And so there is no guarantee that when we ask for seventy thousand, front on taxes, that seventy-five. Or seventy thousand dollars worth of business applications will be submitted. And so when you look at, for example, the downtown urban renewal area, we collected one-ten, but we only spent. In fiscal twenty-four, eighty-six thousand dollars. It's mainly the D U R. And then that was also the five-ten North Fourth Street. You'll recall that that was the last year that we were doing that. So they had a four-year commitment of thirty thousand dollars per year. So that's the last year. So that'll go away. And then you'll recall that as we ask for the next chunk of money, that there'll be the D U R again. And then instead of the Fourth Street building, getting that thirty thousand, it transfers to the Catalyst Building. That you committed to the hundred thousand over three years. So they'll get thirty-three thousand. So that'll be in the next asking, but this drops off.
Remains the same, usually around seventy, seventy-five.
Yes. And we have that five-year agreement that we'd have to renegotiate. I think at the end of twenty-five is what we discussed.
And we increased that, Sharon, because we were having applicants, we were completing. Right. We were having enough applicants that we were running out of money several years ago.
It's really, just to let you know, I'm on the D U R board and it's really helped our downtown. And make improvements as, as far as new roofs, new, new frontage, um, our downtown living apartments. Uh, the D U R fund has used for that over the last few years. And if you haven't been downtown and seen the up, the living upstairs, uh, the chamber has new apartment. As well as, um, Derek O'Neil, they're building a bed and breakfast up there as well as new apartments. And, and Ann and Mark have had added a lot to their apartments too. So it's really come along in the last three and four years.
And that adds value to our downtown urban renewal area.
Yeah.
And so adding that additional value, those valuations go up for those properties, then that.
And there's a lot of single people that are loving those downtown upstairs apartments too. So, very good.
Then you have the co-op that gets funds and then K and D. Was in a, it was somehow connected to that. I haven't found the development agreement, but I think it's a, it had a residential development. That was K and D and I think they got their last payment. It was called K and D Properties Housing Project. So they received their last payment and then the co-op. So next year going forward, it'll just be the co-op, the Catalyst Building and the D U R money.
How much is the call?
Like a hundred and fifty-one. Again, it's based on a percent.
What's that? Over how many years?
Five or seven and it's an increasing percentage.
I think it's five.
I thought it was five. So it goes like, it was like, I think ninety, seventy-five, sixty or fifty. So each year it goes down. Like obviously their value has gone up a little bit because that was probably mid-project, but. Um, so they submitted, I think this coming payment is one fifty-one. So anyway, so the council is required, before I submit this, it was due technically Sunday. The state offices were closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I had to check with them to confirm that there was no penalty to the city that we would turn it in. I'll go to the office tonight and turn it in. So we're good.
Do you need a motion to approve then?
Yeah, there's a resolution of twenty-four dash seventy-eight.
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty, twenty-four dash seventy-eight approval of the urban renewal annual report.
Bradley?
I'll second.
Bills, any further discussion? It's a lot to understand. Um, this was one of those that we had Beth help with as well. So it's a lot of work. Roll call. Right off?
Yes.
I'd say.
Yes.
Heatbrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Number fourteen, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-nine, billable rates for city employees. Um, Lisa spelled out in the memo.
They're going to get the new resolution.
So there is a new resolution? Got it. So we hadn't set any equipment fees since twenty twenty-two.
Well, what I made the mistake of was, uh, Chris pointed it out. So I appreciate that because he was here, obviously, when we approved the original resolution. So as I flipped through it on my screen, working remote, I didn't see there was kind of a hidden line that had. Everybody was getting billed out at seventy-five dollars an hour, regardless of if you were me or a brand new street person. I mean, in that one of our lower wages. And so I don't really think that's proper. I was thinking we didn't have any. That's how this was originally presented. I switched it over to the resolution that Chris had pointed out. Showed that seventy-five dollars. I think it's more proper to say that it's an individual who does the works wage. And then you obviously need to add benefits. And so you're not going to do a big math equation to figure out exactly, do you have the single plan or the family plan with health insurance? So this resolution would then say that it's always your wages times fifty percent for a full-time person and twenty-five percent for a part-time person. And then if for any reason the work that they had to do was on an overtime wage, which obviously wouldn't really be very common. Most of it we'd be doing during our regular hours, that that would count towards that number. And so then everybody is at a slightly different.
What kind of services?
Like, uh, last week, we spent probably, I don't know. Twenty-five man-hours cleaning up a nuisance property. So when we bill them, we have to say Lisa was there, Chris was there. Shane was there, Sean was there, whoever. And so each person's time, so we showed up at eight, we're there till nine-thirty. Someone drove to the landfill, they drove to the scrapyard. A, there's an equipment, like they had trucks, trailers, whatever it is. And so when you bill out for that, um, if. Taylor's billing out his time to, um, shovel the sidewalk, mow the lawn, do whatever.
No, it's the fire department, pitch department.
So Lisa, I have a question. I, I, I know we're addressing the, the personnel wages, but what about the equipment usage? And like you just said, running a truck full of stuff to the landfill. I mean, that's wear and tear on our equipment. How are we addressing that?
Yeah, I didn't have that in the packet, but it is, it was approved in two thousand twenty-two. And you do have billable hours for equipment that was already adopted. Back in twenty-two. So for example, a jet truck is two hundred dollars an hour in the city limits. If they go outside to assist another community, it'd be two seventy-five. A backhoe is one fifty an hour, a loader's one seventy-five. Mower's ninety-five an hour, air compressor seventy-five. Then there's like water department chart is on the list. And then that's where. Uh, it was two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-eight. There was a reference on there that labor for everybody was seventy-five dollars an hour. I just don't think that's probably best. It's hard to justify that everybody's the same wage.
So this resolution is basically setting those fees for the employees, but we still need to update our fees for these other things.
For like January one or something, yeah.
So if we need to.
So this is just like, it would then, and so in the new resolution that I gave you, I. Reference that it's eliminating this seventy-five dollars that was in that resolution from twenty-two. And establishing that anytime we bill out humans' time, it's one times. Point five extra for benefits of a full-time person and an extra twenty-five percent for benefits for a part-time person.
Okay, yep.
That's what this is doing and negating that seventy-five dollars.
And the equipment will charge will be later.
Will stay as it will be, have one on the books, but we'll review it and I'll talk to the. Department heads and see if they feel like it's justified to.
So when you're building private people, your entities, corp, you know, our, what's our response? I mean, do we get, do we get paid? Do we get paid?
No, but we'll put it on the tax.
But I'm saying, are we getting paid? That's what I'm asking.
There are plenty of them that ignore your invoices to date. And that it does not appear that we have done our best.
That's what I'm saying. I, they can get a letter, they can get fined and all that, but are we um going and saying?
So what it is, is that this, the county treasurer, I've confirmed that in May, everything that has not been paid that is owed to us. I talked to Bree about it as our attorney. Uh, we'll make sure that everybody that isn't paid has gotten another invoice in these next few months. Or numerous invoices. We'll keep billing every thirty days and then come May first. I will have, uh, I'll work with Ashley to prepare a list that Sharon Bradley, this parcel related to this. And then you send it to the county and place a special assessment that goes on the tax.
What I would like to see is. A newspaper notice with a nuisance, nuisance written in what we have. Or limit, you know, our list listed. So the public knows that they will be charged for those. Because a lot of people don't understand that you can. Have trash in your yard, you can park your car, you know, they don't realize that they really have to.
Comply.
Comply and they're gonna, it's gonna, they're gonna be charged for that. I think we need to make it more public. Put it in the newspaper and just say, this is what's happening.
Are you saying that you want the law put in the paper? What do you want to be?
Well, maybe we need to publish our uh, city code. Or just say, you know.
I, I agree. I, I understand where you're coming with Sharon, especially with the snow removal coming up here. That needs, that needs to be, I, I don't know if we have to put it in the paper, but maybe on the Facebook page or um.
I think basically it gets too many negatives. I do think as a public posting.
But we can put it on in the seat to say, hey, you know, snow's coming. Snow removal. It, you know.
We can do a small ad that just references like a reminder you have to shovel. We're probably not gonna paper it. It's got every word in it.
Going about like, let's say, parking in the yard. Some people do because with snow coming up, people are gonna have to park in their yard.
I understand that, but all summer you see people parking in the yard too. And then, and our nuisance, I know our new, new nuisance officers, he's, he's taking care of those things, but. How do we let the public know that we are really working on it? Do you see what I mean?
Be proactive about information.
Yeah, I think they need to be more proactive about that.
I think also like something, I just kind of need more time to get my. Things organized, but I also think um. It's, you know, inexpensive to do where people can like sign up for an e-newsletter. And even if we only did it quarterly to start. Where, you know, like, okay, winter's coming. So what are all the winter things for mine? I mean, as long as you have an email, we can send it directly to you, kind of create like a constant contact.
With spring, I mean.
Each season you would say, remember, it's mowing.
Right.
Whatever, tree trimming, here's the heights and then winter's coming.
Leaf removal means does not mean to burn them in your backyard.
And we are also like, I've asked the chief to. Um, like I've just seen in my own travels, which I have kind of a straight route when I get to City Hall, I'm not going much further. But even in my travels from home to City Hall, there's like. Cars that are parked the wrong way. There were cars parked in the terrace between the curb and the sidewalk and I just. Sent it to the chief and he had one of the officers go and now they don't park there anymore. And sometimes to a point, we also have staff. Encourage them to just be like door knocking and say, hey, like you might not know that you're not supposed to be parked there. Doesn't even have to be as big of a production as a letter.
Yeah, I mean, just to put a little notice on their windshield or something and say, please don't, do not park in here.
I've talked to the chief also about snow emergency parking. Like one of the things that I think is works effective is. So we'll like make a third of a sheet of paper that says, hey, snow is coming, reminder that this is the rules, whatever it is. And then we had like third shift. Uh, take the third of a sheet of paper and they dumped them all on windshields for a couple of days. So that it was an individual reminder. It wasn't a ticket, it wasn't you're in trouble, it was just, this is reminding you.
Reminder. I think that's great. And I think people appreciate that. You know, they want, don't want to say, uh, you know, you're being, you're getting a. A warning for this. Just say, please.
It's just a sheet that says.
Just being proactive.
Yep.
Cause I don't really subscribe to everyone is trying to. Just park where they.
And I do think the word's gonna get out before long, because. We are enforcing the code.
And that's good, but I'm just saying some people still don't.
Proactive, yeah.
You know.
Like we talked too about, you know, like the parking permits for around the square or right around the square where you can park. Like there's maybe twenty-five or thirty. And I said, well, we could just order. Avery pre-made postcards and like, why can't we just send out a reminder like, hey, they're available? So nobody's getting a ticket or doesn't know we don't have them yet. Like it's just. Easier to be proactive and help us than waiting for people to not figure it out. So we'll do our best, but good idea.
Doki?
Or we even have.
Um, so I think we're needing a vote. Yeah.
We need.
We need a motion.
We need a motion, yeah.
Do that, yeah.
No one did the motion.
Nobody did a motion yet. This is to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-nine for billable rates for city employees.
I move to approve.
Okay, right off?
I'll second.
Bradley? Any other further discussion? Roll call. Isaac?
Yes.
Keep break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
I appreciate the fact that you're including the benefits of their time because that is worse our expense. Those are expenses to us. All right, number fifteen, appointment of Lisa Carter, city administrator to the city's liaison position for the Red Oak Chamber and Industry Board. We've, as Lisa spelled out, um, myself, Lisa, Elaine Carlson and Brian Bills have had this conversation. And we feel that uh, with Lisa coming in now, um, that she would make a perfect liaison on that chamber.
She's taking Brian's place.
Yes. And Brian, you're okay with that?
Oh, absolutely. And you know what? And I'm just, when I go into those chamber board meetings, I try to share whatever I can. And Lisa would be much more well-informed. And be able to participate on a higher level than I, and I ever could. So yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So I just need a motion.
I'll make that.
Okay, Bills? Keep break?
Sure.
Okay, roll call. Keep break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Hey, number sixteen, this is the presentation of our annual financial reports and our street report. Again, this is what we hired Elizabeth Bonds from Asbury to assist us with. And again, I've asked Lisa to explain this to us. If you have any questions, does anybody have any questions first up?
Super auxiliary. Okay, this is not the audit. This is a required form that goes in the state portal. One, the street report is through the DOT and then the Department of Management is the one that oversees the information. So I think just kind of highlighting the things that. Or happened this year. If you looked at page forty-three in the packet, the first column on the left, the governmental fund, you'll see that the fund balance on July one of last year went. Um, significantly from five point nine to eight point six million dollars. That main reason for that is because you had borrowed that money and a lot of it was not spent on June thirtieth. So we'll be holding on to that fire truck money probably for another eighteen plus months. And uh, at that time, obviously, we had not paid the significant portion of the bar con bill. Uh, for building the streets out in the woodland. Hills subdivision townhomes. And so that's why that's kind of a seething number. It's not like we just randomly save an extra two million.
Generate the interest every day then.
It is now.
It is now.
Okay.
Thank heavens.
Because it didn't seem like we did that. Before, right?
We did not before.
No, we looked into it.
You had CDs, but you didn't have the liquid money in the bank.
We looked into it when I had, when we presented the I-Pate stuff. And the council did say that you wanted us to put it into something that was more money market. We just didn't get a chance.
Into the checks too, if they're being attached by the way. The water department, remember we were gonna do that?
Yeah, I don't think I did.
Okay. All right.
So anyway, so uh, some of the projects that you did, you obviously purchased two ambulances. There was a runway project started. You had. Um, Eastern Avenue was done in that timeframe. Started the Barcon project out on Woodland Hills.
That looks like.
It does.
It really does.
The fire truck uh, was ordered. Again, the money's in there, but not there. So that's, you know, other than that, I would say the only other thing that we're gonna need to address here soon is that the sewer department is probably. Uh, our worst performing on the two utility side of the water. Somehow the water has accumulated. Um, a fairly decent fund balance, whereas sewer has not. Sewer is obviously also more expensive to operate. And so. We'll need to not only look at the rates because of us looking at the. New plant, but even just rates. For now, to be able to better balance the budget. And so we'll be looking at that. But that. Is hard to see as a separate because those are both lumped into the proprietary fund. Column on the report and they just get blended together. So you don't really see the difference between water and sewer. Now on the street report. That's just a summary of everything that you've spent. I would say again, like a commentary on that is that the way that Red Oak has chosen to fund their street department. Is solely based on road use. And so you're really not using tax dollars. When people talk about like paying my taxes for streets, like nobody pays taxes here for streets. Minus the twenty thousand dollar portion of the I-CAP bill. Uh, for our liability vehicle type insurance. That is the only thing that taxes. Right now funded the street department. So it's solely based on road use. So if you look at the total expenses and revenues, there was a difference of twenty-seven thousand. Uh, the mayor kind of said, so does that mean that we overspent? But I should remember that a lot of our street projects are mid-year. You know, like when we're, when we are ending our fiscal year, we are mid-construction season. And so. Sometimes just based on those bills. So there is a twenty-seven thousand dollar variance between expenses being higher than revenues based on the way we report this. But there's also over a million dollars in the road use fund. So it's really just saying. Somewhere in the course of how the project gets funded. It may not have been that the actual revenue coming in for road use is not matching the actual payments that you made. At June thirty. So I would say that that's. Pretty close to even when you look at how much Chris's budget is. Uh, if there's any questions, otherwise. Those were submitted. They are not required to be voted on by the council. The only one is the urban renewal that you already voted on. So just to be compliant, last week before Thanksgiving, I submitted those on the portal.
Alrighty. Good deal. Number seventeen, does anybody have any other discussion with that? Thank you. Number seventeen, this is gonna be uh, take a little bit more time. This is a discussion on the recodification. Um, reviewing chapters twenty-five through forty-nine. And I do, I'm glad. That these are some that we're looking at now because now is ideal for looking at our firework. Our fireworks and our alcohol in the parks and some of those things. And it got me thinking, I'm not sure if you have the most up-to-date. Past code stuff around those two things. So I think we're the only community in the world. That only allows fireworks from eleven in the morning to eleven at night, one day.
Maybe two days is more than. But most are not, no, like that.
Yeah.
Well, they do anyhow, so.
You know, you talk about allowing them. I mean, we allow them for two days, but they go on for two weeks, so.
So just the way that, just the process that we have, people have to come in, fill it out. It's at City Hall. The police are who have to enforce it. So it makes sense that those will go directly to the police department. And we have like a. Week-long deadline so that in advance, well, most people aren't even out buying their fireworks yet. And I feel that all the fireworks stands should have. The city code posted.
Well, we allow fireworks stands to set up a month ahead of time and we allow them to, to stay sta- set up for a month. Uh, beyond. So I, I don't know. Don't know. We allow them to sell them for two months, but we allow them to set them off for one day. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
I agree. All right, so let's, do we, I don't know how much we want to go into detail on this. Um. We've got the questions again from, is it Jason? Justin, Justin. Um, so the first one was with regard to the historic sites and districts. Uh, this is section twenty-six point zero four. The language in subsection three of the section indicates the city may designate historic sites. And districts by ordinance. Does the city have any adopted ordinances designating historic sites or districts? And if yes, please provide copies of those ordinances, including the ordinance number and the date of adoption. So we've applied for, but we haven't. Found out if we're going to get that for historic neighborhoods. So we applied for a um. C L G grant. Certified local government grant to designate. It's like a hundred and thirty-two homes into, I think, three designated historic neighborhood districts. But right now, I'm not aware. Um. Are you guys aware? I don't know if. I don't think we, I mean, the only historic area we have is the downtown historic district.
We know, like, was that just on a federal registry? Or, I mean, I might have to ask Cease. Or somebody, but.
The middle school is on the federal registry. The middle school is on a federal registry.
So the question is, did we ever have an ordinance? But I would think it would be somewhere if we did. In this book.
We have a number of properties that are on that federal registry, including the Murphy Calendar, the Chautauqua. Uh, you know, the nineteen uh, seventeens, like you said, but there's a number of properties on that same register.
But I don't know that we've adopted the ordinances for that.
No, I don't think so.
I think we've, we've approved. Those um, historic districts, but I don't know about the, if we've adopted the ordinances. I couldn't tell you.
So maybe the historic preservation.
Might know.
Yeah. Jim would, Jim would, Jim or Cease would be the ones to ask, I think. Sharon was on there for a long time.
But I don't, I'm never seeing it in an ordinance.
I haven't either.
I'll ask, okay.
Okay. But be aware that we did apply for that C L G.
I knew that, yeah, I know that you have lots. Properties. I just don't know that it's locally driven.
And then question number two is design the review, the, the design review committee that's um, acknowledged in chapter twenty-six point oh four. A subsection four of the section introduces a local design review committee. Is this a formal committee of the city? If yes, there should be a chapter to establish the committee outline. Its makeup and duties. Please provide that information. So, no.
Now, I know that Derrick has a design for downtown.
Form-based design guidelines that we have yet to approve.
Yes.
We have to get those approved.
What we need to talk to him about and.
But that brings this into a view, like we do need someone on there that, so when people.
Other historic preservation.
Yeah.
As the under, as the overall theme. And then on sub four, on page one twenty-three. It says this. What's called the Historic Preservation Commission, chapter twenty-six. And then under sub four, it says the commission may. May appoint three members to a local design review committee, which committee shall have the power to review applications for the Main Street Linked Investments for Tomorrow program. As that.
And that's an old program. Isn't that Main Street program like?
Did we used to be a Main Street community?
I didn't know that.
No.
Main Street Linked Investment for Tomorrow program.
Well, if we are gonna.
We would need to create the committee and appoint people to it.
Well, it's not us, it's them.
Uh, yes, they're commissioned.
So it'll be the Cease lock.
So I think we should ask Cease because she's pretty good about detailing everything in this um.
I can send her this whole code.
Yeah, I would. We can address that and we can maybe go from there.
So then tell me that, just so I'm clarified. So then if we have someone who's wanting to do something.
You know, there's only five members on the Historic Preservation Committee and it's, I was chair for that long time. It's hard to get anybody to do anything. Um, Cease has done a great job. Um, and I think that she's helped motivate those uh, commission members, but.
There are supposed to be seven.
So there's only been five that I know of.
There's seven, five of them in the city and two being in the city or.
You know, John, there's seven now.
I'm not sure. I would have to look at my form. I've got them, we've got them on the listing, but.
It's Donna and Cease and uh.
Drew Swanson.
And Shirley.
And Shirley. And Shirley.
Drew Swanson. Might be seven.
Uh Bill. Bill Jordan.
Yes.
Bill Jordan's on there. Does Shirley, Cease, Donna Grooms, Mike, well, this might be old, but Mike Vega, Drew Swanson. Michaela, Bill.
That's correct, also, I believe Michaela has.
Seven, okay.
Yeah, I believe Michaela has resigned.
Hardly there always.
So some of them.
Same time. So they would need a subcommittee of that board to be this.
Like, I think they don't have.
But then that committee would then review applications like.
Just a lot.
Sign on a building downtown, they would review it to see if it fits within the form-based design guidelines.
That have never been.
That have never been adopted.
But then again, like, who gets to decide that, because that is super, like, I know it makes sense, but it's also.
Yeah, that's a lot for one committee to do. That should probably be.
Zoning.
I can't see three people on that board that would qualify.
The design guide, but but this isn't referencing those design guidelines.
No, that's not.
I know.
That's something totally different.
So I mean, to me, like, some of this is, number one, are we having design-based guidelines?
Need.
And are they required or just guidelines?
But if that's a Historic Preservation Commission, is that just for historic buildings or those are? That those that don't um qualify as historic? Cause you gotta look at that too, because historic is only, we're only seventy-four buildings downtown that uh qualify as historic.
But if the, if if we approved, council approved. Design guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
Then you could have the commission. Appoint a subcommittee to review applications to see if they fit within our guidelines that we approved.
Yes. Right now, what are they reviewing?
Nothing, neither is this, whether this Main Street Linked Investments for Tomorrow program is, that's. Nobody knows what that is.
So the the downtown design guidelines were in twenty seventeen. I was the economic developer, so I met with Derek and Bryant, Brad Wright. From the city, Jim Hoskinson from Historic Preservation Commission. Um Roger Vial from Downtown Urban Renewal Board. So there was that that whole group, we all met, looked through the whole thing. And it got stuck with the council not seeing. The document to approve it, clear back in seventeen.
Okay, well, now the time to review that and and bring that to.
And I think the downtown assessment team thought that it was. Overall, they were, uh they liked the ones that Derek had presented, they said.
Yes.
Don't start over, use those and tweak it, yes.
Yes.
I think that would be a good, uh good uh project for us at our retreat. To look that over. And things like that is what, uh what we need to talk about.
So for now, are we gonna just strike number four, they're out of there because it's. There's nothing.
I think we should, my personal opinion is we should work towards getting somebody, the the benefit of having a co- a a group that can have some say over that is they can help then enforce. That we're preserving our historic.
We're not doing that right now because we have signage that has not been approved downtown. And that's why it should go to a design committee, because I can tell you. Three or four businesses that have signed and just put them up, and they don't. They don't have, haven't gotten permits.
Yep.
And they don't comply with our downtown design.
Or what we want it to look like anyway. So it will be, we don't have, we just have.
I think we should leave it in, but I think we need to take a look at it, see how we can expand on it.
Yeah, we're gonna need to maybe.
Leave it in and say that if the council has adopted one, the task of enforcement for it.
Just rename one.
Also this tomorrow.
Yeah, because that's.
It's irrelevant.
Yeah.
So let's tweak that to say. If the city can, and make it clear that what they have to enforce is only things that the council.
Yes.
Right, like, not just some random guidelines that they decide.
Well, and maybe the committee could include someone from D U R and Historic Preservation and.
City person?
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe it's not the commission.
Yeah.
Maybe we.
Maybe the city should be appointing the committee.
Probably, yeah, best that way.
That would be a good committee.
That would be a combination of city, D U R.
Yeah.
Yes.
It could be, I think it should be a combination.
That's a better idea.
I like that, better, yeah, I think that's a good idea, okay, good. Um, and then that kind of brings us to this question number three, the state, the Main Street lift. Yeah. That's what linked investment for tomorrow, lift. Got it. It's just.
I think you can delete that.
Get that, yeah, get that out of there. Alright, then question number four. Is for um the fire department, section thirty-five. Uh number twelve point twelve, does the fire department answer calls only within city or within a fire district? So.
Fire, how, why does the fire district, cause they go outside and they help other towns. So we can't limit them.
We have mutual aid agreements.
There's a difference between mutual aid and who we cover.
I think we cover the rural.
I would say thirty-five. How many filed out though, in our county?
It's all of our counties, I think it's mostly, I think our county is covered by. Red Oak Fire Department.
There's no other fire department?
There are.
They're slowly becoming defunct. Yeah.
And they all pay into the rural.
Volunteer bus too, though.
We'd stand as a volunteer fire department.
And mutual, this is not restricting mutual aid, mutual aid, like, they call you, you're going.
Yeah.
This is who is. When there's a call from nine-one-one in this area, you are who gets paged. You can call someone else, I mean, I have to ask the chief.
We need to ask.
Kelly Emerson too. Do they?
Yeah, I think you need to answer that specifically.
The answer is, yes, we go outside the city.
Yes, we do.
But we probably have to.
Limit that.
Well, no, I don't, I, you must be saying we're adding, there is no thirty-five twelve, right?
And the other thing is, we don't even reference our rescue squad that is a part of our fire department. So we need to explain that as well.
And my intent was, we just kinda get through what we could tonight, and then we might put it on one more time in two weeks for a shorter discussion.
So maybe go through them.
Probably have a guideline, don't they, should fire department, and how far they go out?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be a bit.
Um. Okay, so we'll get that information. Um hazardous substance spills, this is another one, like, we don't even, we don't even mention Emergency Management Association. I would think Brian Hammond would be my first call if we had a hazardous spill. Because he's the only one that has the asthma training.
Again, it's just, we're not, we're not calling him.
Aren't we? Oh. Doesn't that get taken care of by outside contractors?
Well, he's in charge of seeing.
He's in charge.
With fire and police.
He would be the one to reach out to others, so I think we do need to look at that, I don't think it would be the police department.
Spill at the new clock.
Mm-hmm. Or.
How, how, how is the city involved with that? The fire department of the city, or did that, did the, since it was the spill into the river with that state?
Well, the D N R was immediately, as soon as D N R was in, we're.
That also became EPA too, didn't it?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
And then they, then they subcontracted out to another person too.
But again, the key here is. This is saying that there's a reference to you contact fire and then you contact fire and police.
Yeah.
And he probably doesn't know that we have, cause he says here, should be twenty-four hour, which in most towns our size, it would be, that's only the police. That you have volunteer fire, but since we have full time fire. If it's okay, I will defer to. Justin, John and Brian to kind of.
I agree. I do think we need to reference emergency management somehow, somewhere in our codes. That we weren't in partnership with them. Yeah. Alright, question number six is regarding alcoholic beverages in the parks. Section forty-seven point oh four. Um, I do think that this, his thing is right. In the introduction of the section, the term pleasure ground is used. It is unlawful for any person to consume or otherwise possess any alcoholic liquors, wine, beer within any park or pleasure ground. I think that should be playground. Under the jurisdiction and authority of the Park and Tree Board. What is the definition of pleasure ground and should that term be removed? Should that be a playground?
Well, the playground is in the park.
Well, it's all consumed.
So it's all.
Park, are there any playgrounds not in parks?
I certainly don't like the word pleasure.
Referencing in the first place. It's one of the right. The city owned that are not parks.
For recreation purposes, maybe.
What, Brian?
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, we we passed an ordinance that allowed alcohol in the parks if you. Uh put up a million-dollar bond and you did this and you did that, and you know, which to me is just, you know, further restricting alcohol usage in the parks. And I think we should adopt something similar to what the county and the state have. And I'm not exactly sure how those read, but I think that's what our ordinance should look like.
So what happens if, like? The chamber has an event and then they get a license? People can drink in the park.
So when I, when I got a permit to use alcohol for a family reunion at Chautauqua, I paid a hundred and twenty-five dollar deposit and then I got half of it back, I think.
And then did you have to go and request?
I had to come before the council to request that.
How about the Park and Tree Board? Cause it should be before the Park and Tree Board.
Before the council. It was on the agenda.
I guess it comes back to to you all deciding, should it be the council that decides that or the Park and Tree Board, cause the Park and Tree Board.
I don't know, but it was, I did.
Well, this says both.
Not a public event.
I know.
This says the council and the base get at both, both the permission from both entities.
They did charges for permit to use alcohol.
But I mean, like, jazz in the green, or if we wanted to do music in Fountain Square, people do bring coolers.
I think there's a difference between, like, do you wanna have your. Husband's fortieth birthday party and be able to have an invite only. Bring some coolers and drink at the park, that's one thing, and then there's a licensed event. That's a state liquor license where the public's invited and you're like selling liquor.
I think if we don't have that, we're gonna open it up. People going to the park and drinking beer and.
And that brings us back to.
I would say you don't get to just drink. There's an event, it says a licensed event.
And that would then lead us to why we need a park reservation fee and. Form to complete so that somebody can reserve a park.
Reservation.
We don't have that. We do not have that right now.
Rent the shelter cycle.
No, we do not rent the shelters out, so it's just hit or miss. If so.
What they did was they took me in and they also had two other events, two other events going on in that scene, and they asked me if I wanted, how much of the. That I wanted to use for that day. And I said I was fine with two other people, family things and that, because it was big enough to use. That day, but they did reserve it for me.
Yeah, there definitely should be a fee to that.
So we should have, we should have a permit that you can rent to Chautauqua and then Adam should go out with a nice.
I mean, it's any park, the South Park, Kelly Park, where has the awning over there where you have.
The key is then what most communities do is you just have like a little laminated sheet on Friday that you like, clerks gives to the. Adam and they go post it like this is reserved, and then if someone else is just hanging out there when it's your time. You know you have it, so if you wanna have your graduation party up there or whatever, it's reserved for you, but there is a fee. We can look at the fees for like.
I do think that Park and Tree Board needs to be involved because sometimes, like I had to ask them if they would go clean that up. That a couple of days before because it was on junction days weekend, and we knew that cleaned up anyhow, so.
Well, what events happen in a park that people, like, that we do technically let people drink?
Birthday parties.
Junction days, are there beers at the park?
But they get.
In the street, they're not.
Technically, they're not. Happy licensed event.
Right, right. Say unless you have a licensed event, right?
Ragby was. So I think it should be the two, I think it should be the two.
Chamber event. But we come, we bring that to the city council.
But I'm saying you don't say that, right?
We should say it.
It doesn't say, within, it just says you can't, right, how you're reading them?
Yeah, it says we can't, so this is not the most up-to-date one of this. Ordinance, I don't believe. And I have no idea where you would find the one that was passed.
Well, what, it was all ragry or something else?
Well, this is, this says you can do it, as long as you've got permission.
And the.
You're looking at the code or the question?
I'm not looking at the code, that's my fault, sorry.
The beer and wine may be exhaustively consumed within park areas designated. By resolution of the council and authorized by the board. Maybe.
And we require a million-dollar bond.
It's, I don't think it's a million-dollar bond, it's just certificate of a million-dollar liability insurance.
Oh, what's the difference?
Well, what what's the difference between a chamber event where they have the sip and stroll down on the square?
No, I can.
Right here, it says you have a deposit. Between a hundred and five hundred.
My deposit was a hundred and fifty-five.
So that's.
But I don't require, I didn't request for requiring any insurance or anything.
Hmm. We just need to clarify this.
No.
I think we should table this and talk to um the Park and Tree Board and get some guidelines from them.
Uh huh. Okay. But I agree, pleasure ground.
Yeah, so definitely, I guess, you think about that permit if you didn't have that.
Yeah.
But again, I think we need to maybe clarify that, like, if you're just having a private event that is not open to the public. I don't think you're getting a million-dollar policy, as opposed to. The chamber having junction days, they probably have dram shop insurance.
We were required to have a.
But this says you are.
It says you are.
I think that needs to be taken.
Require the applicant to provide to the tree board before the date of the certificate. Or the date of use, a certificate of general liability insurance protecting the person or group to whom the permit is being issued. For claims to injury or property within a limit, not less than a million dollars for the event.
Right, it doesn't define an individual versus a, an entity for a public event.
Yep, right, I think we should clarify that.
The question is, are we letting people have private party booze? Cause then you don't get dram shop insurance, you know, on this kind of liability insurance, but it's a private event, so dram shop isn't required if you just like. Everybody's. You can bring beer to the park.
So like, if the chamber does an event where they do the sip and stroll?
That has to be a liquor license event, though. I'm assuming.
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is either.
Please don't.
I I don't know, and so you're gonna require everybody to get a.
Is it a special?
Bond, million-dollar bond in order to do that.
No, because those are within the um.
So again.
And if if they're serving that within their premises, that's different than having it outside or in the park or on the sidewalk.
Have we been, have we been checking?
They can take that outside and go to the next.
No, I didn't know that.
I've been in two different communities where chambers had those and quite honestly, they were not legal. If you called the state and said, this is what we're doing. Like you, like, does it say, like, the gift shops, like the.
Yeah, well, just every shop, it doesn't matter.
It includes like the country club, but it includes stadium thirty-five. Yeah.
So we gotta, we gotta be careful on this because that would limit chamber events. I mean, you have Tiptoe on that one.
Well, but we also have to follow the state law.
Yeah, I get that.
So it may change some of those things, we'll have to talk to Elaine kind of about. Cause what happens is. Um. Usually nonprofits. And are allowed to get like a, an event license, but like regular businesses that are just doing. Like their wife's business, like, that's typically not someone that's gonna get a liquor license. For that day. So I gotta look at it.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to look.
So those are some things really to look at, okay.
So, you know, I guess one of my my concerns is not necessarily businesses or events, I'm just, I'm thinking about just a guy. That wants to just take his family down there and, you know, perhaps they wanna have a a beer when they're in the park, I I think we need to think about things like that as well.
Like a birthday party.
Whatever, whatever.
Yeah, anything.
I think some of it, though, crosses into public and tax, that's a problem.
Does.
Then you're like.
Well, and 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 once again, everybody has to take personal responsibility, you know, and. They they have similar rules like that in state parks and county parks, and I don't know why we can't follow suit with that, you know, I mean, we we do expect people to take personal responsibility for their actions and. And things like that, but, you know, at the same time, we should give them personal liberties and freedom, same time, in my opinion.
I know that I rented a um. A facility at the Stanton Lake, the state park, I go through the state to rent that, they don't require us anything for. Yeah, we use liquor, we just pay a rent for the day, but we aren't required to. Uh put anything down for liquor in, within the premises.
But again, it's, you're just having a party. That's invite-only.
Right.
So there's, again, like, usually the definition is like, is it invitation-owned? So there's again, like usually the definition is like, is it invitation owned? So where we did some of these chamber events is like if one of the. Boutiques wanted to invite their best customers to a private event and it was not open to the public, they could serve liquor. But if the general public could walk in and it was open, now you needed a license. And the same like parties for like invitation only, it's your fortieth birthday party, not anybody coming and you belly up to the bar. You get it. That's usually where there's a public invited or private. Because at some point, like if you're having your Christmas party for your company, you don't need a liquor license. Because the only people coming to your party are your employees and their spouses or whatever. But if you're just like, hey, everybody, come to the. Not really a bar. So we'll have to think about this.
Is everybody okay with, so fireworks is the next one and this is gonna require some thought. I think we should.
Let's talk about the questions, we don't have to answer them, right? So everybody knows what the questions are.
Okay, I was gonna say we should just table all of it till the next time, but we can do that. Does everybody wanna keep going through the questions and get those done tonight? Or do you want to stop halfway through, go back, review them before the next meeting so that we can go through them quickly?
Fireworks?
Yeah, fireworks is section forty-eight point oh one. Number nine, the existing definition for retailer is a reference to the code of Iowa, section four twenty-three point one. We recommend and will insert the actual definition from the code of Iowa as the definition. However, that full definition may not be exactly what the city wants to use. The full definition is provided here for your review. Please let him know if this is the right definition to use in the new code. Retailer means and includes every person engaged in the business of selling tangible personal property. Specified digital products or taxable services at retail. Or the furnishing of gas, electricity, water, or communication service. And tickets or admission to places of amusing and athletic events or operating amusement devices. Or other forms of commercial amusement from which revenues are derived. However, when in the option of the direct director of the department of revenue. It is necessary for the efficient administration of chapter four twenty-three of the code of Iowa. To regard any agent or affiliate of a retailer as a retailer. For purposes of chapter four twenty-three of the code of Iowa. Am I repeating myself? The director of the department of revenue may be, may so regard them. Or when it is necessary for the efficient administration of chapter four twenty-three of the code of Iowa. To regard any salesperson, representatives, truckers, peddlers. Canvassers or other persons as agents of the dealers, distributors, supervisor, employers. Or persons under whom they operate or from whom they obtain tangible personal property services or specified. Digital products sold by them. Irrespective of whether or not they are making sales on their own behalf. Or on behalf of such dealers, distributors, supervisors, employers or persons. The director may be regard, may so regard them and may regard such dealers, distributors, sponsors, or supervisors, employers. Or persons as retailers for the purpose of chapter four twenty-three of the code of Iowa. Retailer includes a seller obligated to collect sales or use tax. Including any person obligated to collect sales and use tax pursuant to section four twenty-three point one four A. Of the code of Iowa. I say get rid of everything except for that last sentence. That a retailer includes. A seller obligated to collect sales or use tax, including any person obligated to collect sales and use tax percent section four twenty-three fourteen. I mean, all that other stuff is like. I mean, we do. Because this is in reference to the fireworks.
But isn't each individual fireworks provider, aren't they required to fill out their own bills and each tax form? Except when the fireworks, um, when they had a display down here, wasn't that? Some of the nonprofit too? Wasn't that a?
The, the nonprofits manned the tent, but they did not put up the tent or bring in the fireworks. They just simply worked the tent.
So did they get money from that then?
They did through the company that put it down. Whoever the company was that brought the tent.
They paid those taxes, alright.
So technically they would be in dealer distributor or something.
So is this section here, we, uh, required that we add that to our?
That's what he's saying is.
So we really can't take everything out but the last.
He did say, you know, he doesn't know if this is how we want it to read. I think there's a lot of replication in there that can be simplified.
Okay, but are we, uh, can we simplify that or is that part of the code?
Can he simplify that and just make sure?
Like we have to put that in there because of the code.
Well, he's just saying you're mimicking state code.
We're mimicking state code, yeah.
Okay, cause I'm wondering, I, I think that writing has to, narrative has to stay in there probably.
I think however, he can modify it so that it's less wordy.
It's but Iowa state code.
Yeah, reference Iowa state code and then. Me, the retailer definition. Is just that last sentence, but yeah, maybe the first sentence. Which is forever long.
Well, thanks a lot.
I should became the writer of legal documents.
Can just put in their reference Iowa state code, whatever the code is. Put it in there.
He's surely done this before in other communities.
So question eight, is that? Do we have any definition of temporary structure?
No, I see we don't.
Yeah, I see, no we don't.
Oh, we don't have one, okay.
So this is, this is something I do think we need to. Review the fireworks and we need to start. I don't know. I feel like we need to review it.
You wanna be more restrictive or less restrictive?
So if they're putting their fireworks display up on private property. Um, are we obligated to? Aren't they obligated to follow the rules? I mean, we're not, it's not city property is what I'm saying. So.
But there is a, uh, some people like their fireworks in the entrance of their driveway.
Well, and we can restrict any activity within the city limits that we, that we so want. I mean, whatever we deem necessary, we can restrict.
Public right of way. Is technically.
So I think what they're saying in this question eight is that we say temporary structure means the structure as defined by the state fire marshal. And then he says here. That in reviewing the Iowa code, it does not appear that the fire marshal defines it. So we're referencing a definition, it doesn't exist.
What the city of Mason has, he's got in there, works perfectly fine.
Refers to the tent stuff.
Business, they have them in there.
But they're, they wouldn't be under this anyway, cause they're not a temporary structure.
I think it's pretty clear to me.
So the tent canopy stand, converted metal container or, cause some of them even bring like those. Portable pods or whatever.
Yeah, what we have here, just the big.
Gorilla.
Bring people in, does not mean that's.
Alright.
Will this have an impact on normal zone? No, this is totally different.
Alright, does everybody feel that what Mason City's definition works?
Yes, I, I would agree with that.
Question number nine is section forty-eight point three, which is the display fireworks regu- regulations. The current language in the section talks a lot about conditions established by the council. But those conditions are not listed in any detail here, rather, this is more a reference to conditions. Typically, the code should establish and outline those conditions so that they are enforceable. And this is the problem and clearly communicated to the public, the other problem. I would recommend that we modify this section to include the detail that is referenced and remove the references. Is there a document that the city can provide to him with the condition so that we can draft something? I think we need to draft something.
Okay, right now, so the um organizations have to have a permit. To do public fireworks, correct?
Actually, anybody has to have a permit.
Even if you do them in your backyard.
Yes, you have to have, if I bought, well. Sparklers, you don't have to, but if I bought anything that went up in the air at all. Get a permit from the city a week in advance.
I didn't know that.
Most cities though, a lot of.
I've never heard of this in my life. And then the problem is that the police department doesn't know who has permits anyway.
I know.
So the whole process needs.
Obviously, that can be correct. But I think a lot of cities that are the most successful at it have like New Year's Eve from this time to this time. And the third and fourth. This time to this time. And then during those three days, no one needs a permit. Obviously, like the.
Or even a day before.
The cops just like, we're like, whatever, we're not stopping.
But is there, but here's the thing, is there a time cutoff when it like? Ten o'clock, this needs to end.
It's usually eleven. Like it's still, I always like to hold on for the fireworks, like ten after ten and everyone with little kids.
You still have the person that will be lighting them up till.
But at least on the cops, it's like, okay, like it's eleven.
And that time of year, it doesn't get dark till nine, so.
The biggest complaint that I've had, and I've had multiple people come in my office to, to complain about it is. We have certain people that light off a lot and they leave all the debris. In a lot beside their home and they're stuck looking at it. And then the fact that a lot of these are going up in the air and then the debris is landing. On their yard and their deck on their homes.
Well, that goes back to cities that outlaw, but practical side of it is. So then you have to just say like, hello, appropriate people. Go clean up your crap.
So we do.
What are, would you want to move in the direction of saying it's okay on those few days?
That'd make things a lot easier.
Yeah, I think even a day before, a day after.
Yeah, Brian, Brian said the best, we give them two months to sell then one day to light them off.
Actually, we only give them twelve hours.
And I should be in July third and fourth. You should be able to do it because not everybody, you know.
Or and the fifth, so I say the day before and the day after, just because. We do ours over by the high school, yeah, the baseball park. We just signed to our agreement.
And then the fair has a, a net empty lawn across from the fair buildings.
But they get a special permit for that during.
During the fair.
They get a permit for that for each, I think it's the.
Not need, like our goal would be for those few days each year, we're not gonna require. And then it's not like which ten houses were compliant. So we like that.
Yeah, I think the permit.
Or do you just wanna say?
I would say we can't, we can't say, yeah, the third, fourth and fifth.
The day before and the day after the fourth of July.
Because that gives people more time to even plan events if they want to.
So three to five, the third to the fifth?
Third to the fifth. Until eleven o'clock at night.
Until eleven o'clock at night.
But not after eleven.
Like start at eleven on the third, eleven P M. Not eleven A M. On the third through eleven P M on the fifth.
Well, they can still write, light off bottle rockets and whatever.
But does that, is that an ordinance change then to do that?
Well, we're doing the whole thing, so.
Yes, so.
There should be eleven to eleven. Eleven to eleven. Light off times. You don't want it too early, you don't want somebody waking you up.
Yeah, I, I.
Even in the city, the garbage pickup, they're willing that you do it till eight, seven thirty in the morning.
They come before that. I was told to have mine on at six.
Let's see, is there a fee for the application for the permit? I don't know if we charge a permit. Suzie would know, I suppose. If we charge a permit for like.
First, fourth and fifth, we're not required to get a permit.
And New Year's Eve, a lot of cities will do too.
And New Year's Eve.
And I do think we should reference though, like whereas the, the. We currently don't reference, I don't think, like if the fair board would like to have fireworks that are outside of those two times that we're allowing them. I think we should somehow have that referenced.
I think it is somewhere there talking about getting a permit.
Exception of special events.
Yeah, I think there should be, it should be clearly defined.
Yeah, there's not an exception, it's just we can apply for. We were having like our hundred and fiftieth birthday.
Okay.
Ethical type weddings have fireworks.
But I mean, our fair has them too, you know.
That's what I'm saying too, that's the fair board, when's the fair, July, June?
But they come in and get, they, they submit a special permit, information to do it.
If a permit is denied, is there a way to appeal the decision? Is there a timeline for filling the appeal from the notice of the denial?
Most cities I've been, it was always the fire chief that got to approve. So I guess if he denied it, you could say come to the council. It usually didn't come all the way to the council.
I would agree with that.
May the fire chief approve the fireworks permits? Cause right now we do.
I'm just more used.
Right now, you will. So this year, if we don't make a change to the ordinance.
Well, maybe we can do something ahead of time if we want it to be this way for the fourth of July, we can do a little.
Your code currently requires insurance coverage for the liability insurance in the amount of one million dollars per person. And two millions aggregate. Typically, we also see a requirement for personal injury, typically two hundred and fifty thousand per person. And property damage typically fifty thousand dollars. Do you want to include those limits as well? If yes, are those limits correct or do you want something different?
And again, I would say those are, you know, those are like professional fireworks companies, which. So that's. You know, and you still want.
So do we have to specify that in our ordinance that, you know, that we're not gonna require a homeowner a million dollar uh, insurance policy to set off some aerial fireworks? Or how we, how do we do that?
No, because this is specifically talking about a display firework. So these should be a company coming in to do this.
So this is gonna spec- specify this is a professional fireworks display company regulation.
Somehow we're gonna have to do like a public event or something. Cause I mean, I will say like I know friends that like even have the, can't you like buy like those things that are like this and they still. They don't look like the fireworks that you come on. To the city thing, but they still go out there.
But is it on private property?
But here's the deal though, they could go down Missouri, sit through a VCR class and still get the. Best fireworks possible that will not be sold to the public, they're called the back room stuff that they get for like night effects. The humongous one, the mortar, the mortar rounds guys. That come in mortars and you have to drop them, the mortars that shoot them up. All you have to do is sit through an hour VCR class, I'm not joking you down in Missouri. Not too far from here, New York, and I'm not, I'm telling you, we have people that go down there and will get those mortar rounds.
I'm only aware of one kind of. Gathering where they are getting large things like that.
Last year, they didn't have them. Inside was too expensive.
Alright, I think we, I think we need to clarify this whole chapter a lot. And then question ten is on forty-eight point four, which is first class consumer firework regulation. The current language in this section appears to require a permit for the use of first class fireworks. I assume there is no fee for the permit, is that correct? Are there any other requirements to issuance of the permit? For example, any requirement for insurance coverage? See, we didn't do that.
Determine first class firework.
First class defined, basically anything that doesn't, that goes up in the air. So even those little spinner things that like. You've gotta have a permit for that.
Are you sure that's a class one?
I don't know.
I don't think everything that you're thinking is probably considered a class one firework.
They're, they're listed.
I don't think, our code is not going to say what a class one firework is.
Oh, I'm pretty sure it does define them. Cause I remember Aaron West asking me.
Firework classifications are, that's a federal designation.
Yeah, that's nothing that we define.
Absolutely.
We, we can't define.
I am certain that it says anything that goes up in the air.
First class fireworks would be a, a public, a professional fireworks company that would be, I would think. Display fireworks.
Well, we just, we just need to reference federal classifications because that's standard uh nationwide.
That's right on here.
Mm hmm.
Backing class are cone fountains.
I can't see.
It's not in our code, is it?
Yes.
Are you referencing our code?
Yes.
No, the state code.
She's referencing the state code, that's not in.
Oh, so, so first class consumer fireworks are fireworks that are designed to create visible or audible effects through combustion.
Yeah, I'm in the state code. I don't know what you're, it says aerial shell kits, reloadable tubes, chasers, helicopter aerial spinners, fire trackers, mine and shell devices, missile type rockets, Roman candles, skyrockets, bottle rockets.
Yeah, so anything, anything that.
Basically aerial fireworks, aerial.
Anything that goes in the air.
Yeah.
Bottom line. A Roman candle or anything.
I think the, what we need to, we do not, we should not have that listed in our code, it should just simply reference the state code, because then if the state code changes theirs, then ours hasn't changed. But that's pointless, because this could even be outdated for what it is now.
Yeah.
As time has gone on since twenty twenty.
Right.
I would agree with that too.
But I guess the only question I would have is, that's where, to me, the people that are selling the fireworks should not be allowed to sell without a permit, without educating the public. I don't know, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, you can't, you can't regulate that. If, like, you come in here, cause you gotta come into town, you buy your fireworks and you're going out to the country to set them off. So then this code no longer applies. So you know, the, we as government officials have kinda created that dilemma, because, you know, we, we create the regulations for, for disposing of them, but not the regulation for, for dispensing them. That's, and that's on us.
First class consumer fireworks.
Yeah, but I think you, you can't get into all that.
It's a disaster.
Having to explain all of this.
I wouldn't.
I had to.
So you look it up, in the code.
I don't think most people understand what's a first class or second class firework though.
Would.
As I said.
I'm not gonna go into a fireworks stand and go, hmm, what am I buying, first or second class fireworks today?
So it's based on this current language.
Exactly, because they're selling kids' money, we cannot restrict.
You can't, can't regulate.
So based on that language, though, in forty eight point four about first class consumer firework regulations, then he says that conflict, it seems to conflict with section forty eight point oh seven on consumer firework use restrictions. Is using consumer first class fireworks in section forty eight point oh seven, are they required to comply with the regulations of forty eight point oh four? This is where, this is probably why I was asked to define all of that. Cause everything's contradictory.
No, it's just complicated, because everybody shoots them off for the fourth time.
That's right.
So anyway.
The, the, the more complicated you make this, the worse it is, just.
It needs to be simple.
And we don't have that many uh problems, but I think for public display, we'd have to work on a permit issue and the liability.
That's a whole different thing when you're talking about a public display, but.
And then if any other.
Beyond that.
I mean, if there's any nuisance or noise nuisance, those are two things.
Since we've expanded the days, I think we'll have a problem.
I'm gonna call, uh, my colleague in Bettendorf, because I feel like they always talk.
I mean, you still get.
That would be great.
So. I'll ask. What else?
Um, like anywhere we can try to encourage people to, like, clean up after themselves, that'd be helpful, but as far as nuisances go. Um, so question number eleven is, there's three more questions, we're almost done. Question number eleven is public property use section forty eight point oh nine, so this is still in the fireworks. General requirements, it says in this section, there is a reference to the requirement set out in section forty eight point three, display firework regulations, is the use of only display use fireworks when issued a permit allowed on public property? Or if issued a permit, can someone discharge novelties and consumer fireworks on public property?
I think that should be only those that are issued a permit on public property.
On public property, yes.
I agree.
Fireworks on public property.
No, absolutely not.
Which includes roadways.
And right of ways.
Yeah.
A lot of people come on into the street.
Fair.
They do, and see, that's the, that's the challenge, people are all going out into the street.
Yeah, no, they need to keep them in the driveway.
They need to keep it on their own property.
That will need to be educated, people will need to be educated on that one. Because.
But they are doing it.
Diligate that to the mayor, yes. Cause I think everybody, I've always done it. We've always, I didn't live here, my kids are way too old now.
Well, and I've seen him doing in the streets, nobody picks it up.
Exactly.
But they light them and then before they know it, a car's coming around the corner and they get a firework going off right in your car, that's why, yes, it should not be.
That's considered.
Any type of public area.
Right, some of the driveways are pretty close to the street anyway.
Yeah, that's bad.
All right, so number twelve is on noise control. He said, we would recommend that noise control legislation be included in the nuisance control section of the code, therefore, he would like to move this uh section to chapter fifty three, is the city okay with that change?
I'm great.
So I agree, I think that's fine. Um, and then question thirteen, last question, typically with noise control chapters, we see language that allows for noise variance permits, where a person or group could seek permission from the city to exceed allowed noise levels for special events or construction activities. Is this something that the city does? If yes, what are those requirements? Is there a fee for the permit? Who approves a permit? Does the city have an application form?
None of the above.
No.
Yeah, it does make sense though, because like when you have, like, so I'm looking at the included ones.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the sound equipment made from public right of ways, so that would be like if we get speakers downtown, but like.
Right.
I don't see anything that talks about like um like if the chamber's having an event and they have a band, it doesn't really talk about that, so a lot of times.
We should identify it.
We usually have a cutoff time, correct?
You have a nine P M, that's not appropriate for an event.
Nine P M is not.
So then you do a permit and you say now the chamber can go till eleven or twelve.
Well, it's just like a football game.
Football games are exempt, school events.
There. So I mean, those are a lot.
So what I'm saying is, so it says school activities, the sounds made by students, employees, and the general public while in attendance at a school event is exempt. But that's what I'm saying, like, so when you say like a public event that has a band in a public place could apply for a permit, so then instead of just saying they can do whatever, we can say, okay, it's downtown, it's appropriate, eleven, you have to stop your band or twelve, usually.
And most, and most organizations do that, apply their permit.
But it's not outline that you have.
Yeah. Do we even spell out like the decibels and all of that? I can tell you that this was an issue in Essex just last year.
Where?
In Essex. And it was like, they were
usually they're saying things like what's reasonable.
Level.
The other thing that I don't see as an exemption in here, which I would suggest, because I've had this before, is the pool. So we'll say like at the public facilities, we have, it seems better here because you don't have houses right around the pool. We had people right next to the pool and they were super salty about the speakers.
Sure.
Well, and the fair.
Does it get the pool?
Yes.
But we don't have any houses right around the middle.
But still, you wanna like put in your exemptions, just like a football game is exempt, so is your pool.
And, but fair should be.
Outdoor lighting can be a real hazard too for a lot of, I know in cities.
Actually, like our cage, our, you're right, our cage, I've had people ask that we turn those lights off at the cage by ten thirty.
Well, the, the cage is a park technically, so it needs to be shut off for whenever the parks close.
Yeah.
They should go on timers. They can't, they shouldn't be there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, cage is the basketball court across. All right, so I'm gonna encourage everybody to read through these all and make sense of them, if there's anything that doesn't make sense to you, let's like talk about it.
We'll put it on next time again.
Yes, we'll put it on next time, do we need to have a special meeting for it? Or do we just wanna take, make it a light?
Doing it at the five thirty.
Make a light agenda. Yeah.
Yeah, we should be, we're pretty quick.
I think so.
We've already kinda walked through most of it.
All right, we don't have any department reports, administration report. Number nineteen.
I have. Um, we're starting union negotiations, I don't know what you guys are used to, but I'm including the chiefs this time, because I feel like it's important for them to be on the management team for that, so I'm accepting the initial proposals. I got the one from fire, I thought I was getting it from police last week as well, but then the two chiefs and I'll go over, kinda try to do some of the preliminary and then bring it to the council, there's nothing super changing, I don't think. Um, we issued uh today, once the fee is paid, but it's approved, the first building permit for the southern, on the east side of the road for the townhomes. Um, we do have the exception with the zoning, where you like approve the zoning, but didn't really approve the zoning, so we're doing the zoning. It's a plan that at the next council meeting, there's a ad that'll go in the paper this week for the rezoning of the, all the townhome land for the market street that went from residential to commercial and then the Bill Horner building. No, I didn't put the Bill Horner building on there, because I don't even know what you guys did for that, and I don't think it was exactly what you were supposed to do, so I need to deal with that.
Yep.
So those two, um, and I am going to request that because you already approved it and went through this process, that I'm gonna ask for you to consider suspending the rules and getting it all done that day. Because for the townhomes, they can do nothing vertical until you're done, so they can do dirt work, concrete work and puddings, which that should be fine for the next two weeks, but I don't really love the idea that because it was our error that we.
Yeah.
Asked them to hold off.
Hold off. Hmm, I agree.
So we put that on the agenda.
It'll be on the sixteenth, yes, so there will be a public hearing for those two zonings and then it'll be an ordinance that I'll prepare, which is what you didn't do, is you didn't have the public hearing and you didn't adopt it by ordinance, you adopted it in one case for a resolution, in one case just by motion.
By motion.
So that was where the error was. So, and I put right in the ad, it's going in the paper, like a phrase that, a sentence that said like, this is a redo, because it was just not administratively approved in the right process or whatever.
Yep.
Um, but they are doing that, and then I also am splitting with the developer as a part of that electrical stuff that you approved last time. Um, we cannot get any of that all fully installed, and so what I approved was a thirty five hundred dollars split with the developer, so we'll be paying seventeen somewhere around seventeen hundred and fifty dollars um to bring a temporary service from the south side of Ratliff up to that southern lot so that they are not delayed over the winter, so I did go ahead and approve that. Um, they'll pay for half of it. Mike Farnham at Russell Electric will be doing that work for us, and then in the spring, he'll get the actual conduit laid and the streetlights and all that stuff that they need for that, so at least it wasn't like.
What's the timeline to start building?
Right now.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna work on the first five, the first five units in the one building. They'll be starting on that.
They'll do something over the winter, so that they have a chance of getting.
They had hoped to have three structures, which would have been fifteen units done, like in the works now, but they're only gonna get five.
So five would be how many units then?
One building.
One building is five units.
Five, okay.
There's some fives and then a couple at the north end, fours.
I have people asking already, if they're gonna pre lease those or?
Yes, they will.
Do they have the lease numbers too?
Um, not yet.
Okay.
It's gonna depend on cost.
Do they, can you get a copy of the floor plans?
I'm sending the building.
Can you send me? That, cause I have people asking. And, you know, there's the older people that wanna move to those.
Yep.
Because there'll be so much.
There's zero entry.
And that'll free up some of our housing, is the thing, in town.
Yep.
Which will be good.
Um, there will also be a public hearing at the next council meeting for the comp plan, that's why it wasn't on today, because we had to do public hearing notice. So I got that in the paper for, again, this week, it'll be in, and then you'll review that in two weeks. Um, might wanna think like whether we approve it or whether we have our public hearing and then have it as a part of our retreat on the thirtieth and then approve it in January, like, if it's kinda part of your goal setting up, we can decide, let me think about that.
We have had the staff review it, so staff have reviewed it, but the council needs to review it.
Yeah, we've reviewed it for two years.
And no.
Some of us have reviewed it for the two years.
The public hearing for the planning and zoning, no one showed up. Uh, they have their public hearing ready.
Mm hmm.
Um, and then we did do a big cleanup um of a nuisance property on Fourth Street.
I guess they will thank us for doing that, by the way.
So that will be billed out, um.
What was that?
Nine eleven.
Can't give it.
Uh, you can, I guess, but.
So.
Between.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, it's much better.
Yeah, we've been there before. Well, it was all hands on deck, the staff did a great job, we had police there, just because obviously it's a kind of emotional.
Touchy situation.
Situation, so.
We had, we had public workers that were worried that day.
But the police were there, they did a great job, um, Taylor, that was kinda his first major cleanup, so he went through that process, obviously, the courts, and then getting to the date, the fine will be seven hundred and fifty dollars. Including, that's on top of whatever fees that we build on, so I'll let the council know, we're still gathering all the time and we did as much as we could to take it to the scrapyard, so they got like five hundred dollars for the scrap, so that comes off the bill that we end up invoicing.
And we would leave all of it there.
We held it there, so it'll be our time.
Our time.
So everybody that showed up, it was like, you know, the cops, Public Works Utility, everybody was there. Um, they were at the property for about an hour and a half to just get out of there quickly, they said, anyone that can go, just go. Um, and then it'll be the time of like traveling to Atlantic to get to the scrapyard and take it to the landfill and the equipment, so it won't be a small bill.
Yeah.
But, um we do have the retreat booked for the thirtieth, it'll be at the new coffee shop that Bo and Ann.
Hey, Laura.
We're doing. Yep, um, and then the mayor and I'll work on the agenda and kinda what our plans for that day. And the staff has been informed, so everyone's planning to be there.
This is department head staff, not all staff, but we're gonna get some input from all staff prior to the meeting though, so that they're all a part of it.
Um, so it'll be about twenty of us there and just kinda plan like a full workday, so like a eight to four or something like that. We'll provide lunch and stuff, snacks, whatever. Um, other than that, the mayor has moved her office, yay for the mayor.
Yay, I'm not in a broom closet anymore.
And things are kinda moving along, we're gonna paint some other stuff, we have, I think. One of the assistant guards from the pool, and then she had a friend who used to own a painting business, so she's been a great help. Um, just kinda helping us figure out colors and what should paint, what not to paint. Um, Kathy from the library has also been a huge help there. What are your secret talents? Everyone should disclose theirs, Kathy's is like drywalling and.
Catching, catching drywalls.
She's fixing the drywall in that conference room.
Yeah.
Instead of just having.
She reset the door.
She did.
In, between the conference room and Taylor's, she, they, her and Taylor redid that. Yeah, they did great.
Everyone has those like secret tunes, but anyway, so working on that stuff, the third day of the cleanup we had and last, not last Friday that we were closed, but the twenty second. So while we do still have some stuff to do, we're not planning to close anymore, get the rest done.
Awesome.
But it was, I know that it wasn't easy, but it was super helpful, like you couldn't have done as much.
You know.
Had to be done.
So you'll all have to come in and look at the city hall, it's a lot better, and it will be great after it's all painted. So, good deal, thank you Lisa for taking the lead on making sure we got that all done, because So, good deal, thank you Lisa for taking the lead on making sure we got that all done, because. It wouldn't have happened, it would not have happened without you, so I.
Just so you don't have to feel bad, it's probably my third city that I've had to do that and stuff. We're not the only ones that have a lot of stuff.
Um, so that brings me up, I'll do my mayor report next, but Christmas party gathering, is the council invited to any staff? Christmas party or no?
Usually we just have a staff one during the day, and then I don't know if we wanna, I mean, even if we could. Like if you guys wanted to get together, we can all like not talk about city business and we can go out as a small group at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Typically, it's employees and the mayor.
Yeah.
But we are gonna do like a two hour on the Thursday before Christmas week.
Nice.
Um. Just to have some team building camaraderie, have food and some games or something at the fire station.
Okay, and Christmas and New Year's hours, do we need to talk about those now or next time?
We're talking about, like, so we only have Christmas Day as our paid holiday, and some cities will give the option that if an entire department would like to be off instead of picking. Like, you're the one that has to stay. Um, obviously, they have to take their days and cash in a vacation day, but kind of just checking in with the council if. I, I mean, obviously someone's on call for water and sewer and plowing is plowing, the cops are working, the firemen are working, but. For example, like at city hall, although Suzie may wanna be there, she didn't know that she wanted to be off, but you just always feel bad that if you have to travel. And you're the sucker that doesn't travel, then you're sitting here by yourself and no one comes in anyway, like who's coming here on Christmas?
Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Really?
So is anybody opposed to that as long, we're not saying to give a free holiday, it's just. If everybody wanted the day off and.
That's fine.
Go for it.
Most cities, it is a normal paid holiday, I'm not suggesting that for now, it's just, I hate saying like, well, draw the short straw and you have to stay off. If everybody wants off, no one's coming in anyway, I don't think.
Yeah.
It's not a bill due date or anything like that, so we'll let you know what everybody decides, but.
Okay, good deal. Um, so with my report, number twenty, um strategic planning she hit on, my, moving my office she hit on. Um, I had a league of cities board meeting, I have another one coming up next week. Um, my mayor's youth advisory council toured the Montgomery County courthouse with Jill Azuna on a Sunday. And then we had Chief Justin give us a tour of the police department yesterday. Um, and then the league is looking to present that community champion award to the youth council, they were one of two. To receive a community champion award, um, and I'm gonna see if they can do it at the next council meeting on December sixteenth. The youth will be back for college being out, so hopefully we'll get all of them here to do that and get a picture. Think that, oh, and then, just a reminder that the nineteen seventeen lofts, the middle school. Open house will be next Friday, December, Friday the thirteenth, which just seems so fitting. Um, from two to five, and then Saturday from twelve to five on the fourteenth, so invite the community out. I have seen that one apartment is already filled, so they've been moving in, we got the occupancy certificate. And it feels really good to have that project almost done. It's a seven year project for me. So, I'm really glad that it's done, so. Alright, other items for city council, I guess, let's start sharing.
Oh, well, let's see, this month though, the Thanksgiving is kind of slow, but I did, um, we had a cluster's meeting. At the YMCA Thanksgiving dinner, and then I also volunteered the theater for our free movie on Saturday.